I know.
You know?
Put them all around the office.
I love my.
Oh, we gotta put a couple of current ones up. Freddie's not in there. I got just Charlie.
No, this is actually my work computer. Max.
Seth Brian.
I think we're live.
Excellent. All right, so we're ready to start with the public meeting portion. This is a public hearing, RSA 198:20B, colon, acceptance of public gifts with a value of exceeding $5,000. To accept the following donation for the district, custom Resolute Wrestling mat valued at approximately $11,890.
Take a motion to accept the donation. Second, third.
Any further conversation?
Just, it's from the...
I'm sorry. Friends of Litchfield Youth Wrestling, which is a nonprofit organization.
Oh. Oh, that's not good. You serve them.
It's okay.
Hold down.
Give me a second. I'll get a little over here. There you go. I would just close my fucking killer. That's sexy. So much struggle. I don't feel like...
And again, the board would like to thank the wrestling... Where was I going?
Friends.
The Friends of Litchfield Youth. There's Friends and there's not. Again, the board would like to extend their gratitude and thank you for the donation of the mat. So with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain. Motion carries five zero zero. Next is RSA 189:68-4, to permit the use of audiovisual and photographic recordings in classrooms for educational purposes such as recording student performances for co-curricular or instructional purposes, creating classroom instruction materials, and providing tools for teachers' instructions and development. Do you want to speak on it?
You know, this is a change in the RSA that was put in last summer, and the intent of the RSA was very narrow. It was to prohibit the use of a video recording of teacher evaluations when they were not aware of it. However, the language of the RSA made a very, very broad impact on public schools. So we've been advised to have a public hearing, and then we can implement our policy that we have as we normally would with contact to parents and also with information being gathered. So we're, this is just a public hearing to allow us to implement. The RSA has already been rewritten and submitted to the legislature, and I believe that by the end of the summer, this RSA will go back more like it was previously and be more specific so that there's not any confusion. So this is strictly to have a public hearing in accordance with the RSA.
Anyone like to speak on it? No? All right. So we hear a motion to permit recordings. Second? Any further discussion? Not? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain. And we'll now close the public hearing. Call it to order. Again, I'd like to welcome the residents of Litchfield to our February 17th, 2016 school board meeting. I'd like to begin with a pledge of allegiance. Are you gonna do that, Derek?
(laughing).
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
I know it's right beforehand, and I said, "To move the flag," I says, "Watch Derek."
I know, I did one of these, whoa.
All right. Do we have any revisions to the agenda?
Uh, no, we don't, Mr. Chair, not from me.
All right. Summary of non-public actions from February 3rd, 2016. Mr. Barker made a motion to approve the non-public minutes of January 20th, 2016, as written, Miss LaPore, second. Motion carried, three zero one, with Mr. York abstaining. I don't believe we have any presentations or recognitions.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Correspondence? I'm not certain of any.
Um, I don't think so, no.
No. Approval of draft minutes from 2316?
Make a motion, Seth. Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain. We also have draft minutes from 2616?
Make a motion to approve them.
Any further discussion?
Is that deliberative?
Yep.
Act it out.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain. Carries five zero zero. They'll bring us to community forum. No takers. Superintendent's comments?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair. We were made aware just prior to the meeting, I believe it was on Tuesday or Monday afternoon, that policy EEAG, which is the use of private vehicles to transport students, has been interpreted differently by the state than it had been previously. And I just want to make everybody aware that, so you don't think it's coming from the superintendent's office, it's actually coming from the state and legal interpretation. And we will bring that to the board in the next meeting so you can have a better review of it. But the essence of it is that the new wording is going to be, "In no case may a district employee transport a student in a private vehicle unless the employee has a valid school bus driver certificate from the New Hampshire Department of Safety." This prohibition does not apply to mixed-use school buses. It's a really disappointing interpretation of the law because it's going to really hamstring how we are going to be able to have our kids transported. For instance, if we have a kid going over to an alternative high school, sometimes one of the employees would transport them, that is no longer going to be allowed. So I will put this onto your agenda for our next meeting, but I just kind of wanted to get the word out there so people didn't think this was coming from the board or coming from the superintendent. It's coming from an interpretation regarding transportation of students by private individuals. So more, more, more later, but thank you.
Do we have a... Do you know roughly how much of that has taken place now?
I don't think there's a tremendous amount of that that takes place now, but there is probably a small amount, two or three at the high school, maybe, I would guess. I don't think there's a lot, but enough so that we have to...
Do you want me to speak on that?
Sure.
I mean, we do have our at-risk counselor who has his information on file through insurance. Parents have signed off. We have a couple of kids that do need to get to Londonderry High School by 2:30, whether we don't have a bus. We do have permission for a couple of the other students that they may just not be, they need to go home for the afternoon.
Okay.
So it's not many, but that will make a difference moving forward.
So is this something we're going to be required to get them transportation?
Not necessarily, no. Not to the Londonderry Night School, no.
Okay.
No.
Do the parents still have any option of signing off on it or anything like that? It's just blatantly... Not a lot.
I would say, based on this quick reading, I don't think so, Derek, but if we could, you know, we just got this the other day, and so Michelle and I just kind of struggled through it. I just wanted, I wanted to avoid the idea that it's always the school board or it's always the superintendent.
It's always our fault.
It's, you know, and I understand it's always the school board's fault, never the superintendent's fault. But no, seriously, I just wanted to make sure people understand that a lot of times we're just doing what we have to do by either state or federal mandates. I just wanted to kind of put that on the table and talk to that a little bit to maybe assuage some people's concerns about top-down connectivity issue.
You know, an opportunity for, I'll put it on Frank's shoulders here, but I'll begin a process of evaluating one of the smaller buses and getting an employee certified that not only could that person be used for, you know, one or two students, but they could also be the ones that move the students instead of the larger buses, you know, for, you know, whether it be to Pinkerton or wherever we're, or Alvern. But maybe it may be something that we look at, we have to bring that in, just because of cost. I mean, continuing to outsource big buses to, for these just may not be economical, and it may be at a point where we have to take a look at what's the best way to, to use that, that bus in that sense.
I think we should review always, you know, how well and how efficient we're using our resources. I agree with you. I think that when you look at those things, sometimes you have to keep in mind that employees have to be released from other kinds of jobs, duties, and sometimes they're long periods of time. And whenever you start dealing with motorized vehicles, you start doing with repair and maintenance. And sometimes there's some, there's some hidden costs that we've got to make sure that we calculate into the ROI investigation, but certainly we can look into that.
School board comments?
I just have one subject I just want to touch on, just to give a little advance notice. As we know, we have one more meeting before the elections. There's a possibility the board may change, it's the stands right now. And with that being said, I just want to give a heads up, regardless of who's here. Some of the undertakings will be going forward next year that will require obviously additional volunteerism, work from the board. And two of them are pretty intense, as Derek has been on the LEA negotiation team in the past, which still will have to form another... No, you have.
I will. I'll pass this year.
No, I'm saying, you know that.
You may not ask you. You may not get that job.
I know, I'm missing meaning. And I just want everyone to know, I mean, it's time-consuming, it's a lot of work. That's just one of them. And then you're also going to have a superintendent search, which, again, will require one or two individuals to step up for that, along with all the other additional normal perk, budget committee, and so on. So I just wanted to, like, put it out there and just give everyone a little heads up, you know, start thinking about, you know, what you might be interested in doing and just, you know, rather than in two meetings from now, everyone's sitting around from each other and saying, "Me." Because then, next thing you know, whoever is sitting in this position right here might be saying, "Well, you're gonna do this? You do this." But, I mean, there is a lot of work to be done next year. Like I said, between negotiations and superintendent search itself is quite a bit added on to the plate of just all the other responsibilities. Just want to point out, not that I didn't enjoy all the extra time with my LEA cohorts, but not the issue.
That's okay. You can be on budget committee then.
Brian likes budget committee.
If there's no other comments?
Yeah, me either.
If there's no other comments, we'll turn it over to Mr. Perez.
Okay. Thank you for having us. This is going to be the one-to-one technology update slash proposal. We brought four students. They're going to come up and talk to you in a few minutes. Ms. Angie is going to come up first. She's going to give you her, a summary, a quick summary of her evaluation that she, she did. It was really nice to have her doing the evaluation. It was kind of dual-pronged for her. She's part of our committee, and she's also getting her doctorate, so it was, it's a doctorate project as well. So it kind of helped the committee out as well as helping her out as well. So she did a really nice job as, we had a little, a lot of positives come out of this report from the things that she's collected, so I'll turn it over to her first.
Thank you. Good evening. Most of you know me. I've been your librarian for almost 10 years now, and I do a lot with kids and technology. And so for me, this was a lot of fun. You have in front of you, or you should have in front of you, a copy of the project report. And in that report, I give you some background knowledge about the project and how it came to be. There is some other background that maybe you guys don't know about. We have done pilots before in this district in the past with one-to-one technology. I've written grants for those. And the information was given to the SAU about the impact on students. But most importantly, I think, we made sure that the evaluation this time was based on steering committee feedback, parent feedback, student feedback, and we spent a lot of time working directly with the students and seeing what they were learning in their classrooms. Now, I give you the background of our stakeholders in the reports. I don't really want to read this to you. I think it's online as well. Is that correct? Okay. Some highlights, I think, that are important. Organization is key to a lot of these kids being successful in high school. Now, this particular project was focused on ninth graders. And ninth grade is a pivotal time for students because they're transitioning from middle school to high school. So they have a lot on their plates already, and if they can be organized, it really helps them to adjust, if you will. Another big positive that we heard from parents and from students is the ability to communicate with their teachers on a regular, ongoing basis and get that feedback that they need to adjust their learning. In the one-to-one group, students reported using their device 89.8% of the time at home for schoolwork. Kids who were not in the one-to-one group, 67.3% said that they used a device for homework or that they were focused on homework after school. So if you think about that in terms of engagement, when students are engaged in their learning, they are 16 times more likely to get something out of the content. And I get that data from the student voice reports. Now, our teachers had agreed to look at their teaching through the SAMR model. Now, this model starts with substitution and then augmentation, modification, and then reinvention of their learning. Redefinition. That model was pretty evident in classrooms throughout, throughout the school. You know, some teachers started off gung-ho, they were right into Google Classroom right from the beginning. Others, it took them a little time to get used to it, and they needed additional support. So in the back, I have some recommendations for you going forward. We believe that the program should be continued and expanded. It should be offered to as many children as possible. Parents have asked for, and I think it's possible, to do a payment program for them. I think it would be beneficial in that all the devices would come through the district and the payments would be coming from the parents. So you would not wind up with a, you would not wind up with a deficit, if you will, from implementing technology. I also don't think, and the teachers agreed with me, that it's not a good idea to force technology on teachers. If they see it working in other classrooms, they are going to adopt it. It's a matter of having evidence to change their practice. Now, the intended operational outcomes come right out of our mission statement. We want our kids to be able to exhibit critical thinking and problem-solving skills. We want them to be able to use resources to obtain information and facilitate their learning. We believe that these kids will exhibit personal responsibility as long as they're given the opportunity to do so. And we know that they will work cooperatively. We've seen a lot of collaboration on assignments in their classrooms. For teachers, we want to be able to inspire excellence and promote lifelong learning. And we want to be able to provide rigorous and diverse educational opportunities. When you work with a device like the ones that the kids have, that opens up the whole globe to them. We also want to make sure that we're providing the contemporary resources that they need in order to gain those 21st-century skills that are so important to them. Our needs, pretty simple. We need professional development around teaching and learning with technology. For teachers who are not comfortable integrating the technology into their own classroom, we really believe that they will need support from their certified peers. We have a technology department that's proactive and that benefits us now. We really appreciate having a technology director who's forward-thinking and really looks forward to having a day when all of our kids can be on their devices at the same time. He has done so much for our district already. It's just been a real blessing to have him. So thank you for hiring him. One thing that we understand that we will probably need is time for our teachers who are certified as technology integrationists to go into other classrooms and help those teachers. So that may require time out of the classroom in order to do that. And we want to make sure that parents stay regularly involved. Now, we've been talking about a YouTube channel that would be dedicated to parents, showing them how to use some of the Google Docs and applications. And there's already a lot of videos out there that I could curate for them and put out for them. But those are, those are the things that are upcoming, but we need your support to do it. So we wanted to make sure that you had a report that fully reflected all the aspects of teaching and learning that we've experienced over the last six months. I hope that this did it for you.
Can we ask questions?
Okay.
Yes, please, yeah. All right. It was great, thank you very much. You gave us a bunch of data and stats on how successful it's been and how much more engaged students are, how much they're getting more out of the content and stuff like that. And it sounds like the committee's recommending we go forward and continue it. However, you're also saying we shouldn't force the teachers to embrace it. If it's going to be successful, if you're asking the board to spend a bunch of money on this initiative, don't we have to expect the teachers to embrace it and put their effort into it as well?
I think that what you have to do is you have to do it in steps.
Okay.
You know, you have to be, you have to be reasonable in your expectations. We have a lot of teachers who are new to this. It's going to take them some time to start learning how to use those tools. Now, one of the things that I saw in my own research was that when the teachers who were learning the one-to-one alongside their kids, this actually created a bond between the teacher and the child that was huge because they, they knew that the teacher was learning it at the same time. And I think that that's important.
But based on your own report, you're expecting all the teachers after next year to be fully on board?
And we're gonna, yeah, we'll, when I get to that part, we'll, we'll talk about that piece. And I'll, and actually...
Is that not the expectation?
It is the expectation that we will be having one-to-one at some point every T... If we go full one-to-one, that there will be pieces of the one-to-one, the Chromebooks will be used somewhat in, I mean, there's going to be some, like PE, I mean, you're not going to...
No, I understand, but I'm just saying...
Some of the arts, but...
That, that, you know, just filing up on Derek's part. And I understand that with change there always is a little concern and stuff like that.
And it may take, you know, in the, the places that we've gone and taken a couple tours in, we want to go, also go to Bedford. Jason's trying to set up a meet and greet in Bedford. We just thought about maybe possibly, just today, Andrea and I were talking about going to Hollis Brookline. They're using some, some new stuff. And people that I've spoken to, they've said that there are, there are going to be some teachers that it's going to take a little longer to grasp the Google Docs, to grasp the Google Classroom, just grasp the technology. So...
And here's the other part of that. It's not always appropriate to use technology in a classroom.
No, no, I, I understand it, but I guess, I guess my, my concern on this would be, you know, I, I don't have, I don't, I'm not concerned about the students understanding how to use the technology. But, but how, how are you going to, how are you going to have a classroom in which 80% of the students are in classrooms that are using the technology, and in one classroom they're not using the technology for whatever the reason may be? Do you not feel that those students are being disadvantaged? Because, you know, the goal, this is not a, this is not an old goal from the school board. This is a six-years-in-the-process goal, so it's not, this isn't new to anybody that's an employee at our district or shouldn't be new. Right. Because we've been pushing this in a very aggressive manner. So, you know, I, I understand that there'll be drawbacks and stuff like that, but again, I, as we had in the spring, it should always be the expectation...
Right.
...that everybody is coming on board.
So, right. So, and if you look at the proposal that I, there's another attachment that you probably got, there's a list of 23 teachers. Right now, we have about 47. 23 teachers said that they would be willing, next year, if it was a go, they would be willing to go. And they're, they're, they need a little bit of, they just need a little bit of PD, just to kind of get them going on the classroom. 23 of them, whatever grade they teach, there's a few of them that teach the upperclassmen, so that's not even going to be a possibility next year. But they, I just, I put out a blanket email to the whole staff, and I got 23 people that said, "We would be ready to go next year with Google Docs, maybe a little bit of PD on Google Classroom." Those other, a lot of those other teachers came back and said, "You know what? I need some PD before I even want, really give you a solid answer, but I'm interested."
Can I just say one more thing? Okay. How many of you have read The Tipping Point? You know, once, once you get to the point where everyone in the school has been exposed to it and has had an opportunity to learn about it, you're going to find that they're going to want to implement more and more of this in their classroom. And I think it's a reasonable expectation that they would go to the PD, they would see what's available, and then once they're able to access those tools and that they're consistently useful for the kids, then they're going to implement it. The problem up until now has been that our network was not capable of doing this. We literally had to wait 20 minutes for, for a laptop to boot up in the library. So if you have to wait 20 minutes to log on, in the meantime, the kids are looking at you and you're going, "Here's my dog and pony show so that I can keep you guys interested until the technology's available." With these, Billy, come on up here.
So, yeah, so why don't we start? Why don't we start the presentation of students?
Just clarification?
Yep.
That's past tense when you say 20 minutes.
No, it still takes 20 minutes for a laptop to log on.
Yeah, our laptops, Jason's aware of that. Jason's trying to...
And I can send you, I can send you...
I don't need it. I just was asking a question.
Yeah. It literally still takes 20 minutes for our laptops to log on.
So when the kids come up, we'll have the, each student come up, they're going to introduce themselves, and then they're going to tell you what they're going to be talking about.
Hi, I'm Billy. I'm going to be talking about English today. So first thing I do when I come into the class is open up Google. I have all my bookmarks up here, and Google Classroom is the one that we use the most. So, yeah, it's fine. So I'll click on Google Classroom.
Want a light off? Can you see?
And right away, I can see all my teachers. I can contact them right away. I see all my assignments, I see all their due dates. I see the exact time that they need to be done. I see the assignments that are already done. I'm just going to click on Animal Farm, Chapter Seven Questions. I can click on this link, and it brings me right to the doc. And I've already started it, so you can see my responses. And once I'm done with it, I can just turn it in right from here. That button loads real quick.
Mr. Cooper's grading it right now.
(laughing).
So I can turn it in right here, and that'll bring me back to the classroom.
So when you click the link, it creates its own copy for you? You can edit right directly?
Yep, it's already on my drive, actually. So the, the document was already open. So all I had to do was click on the link right here, and that brought me right to it, opened it right up. So I can turn it in right here, it prompts me to turn it in, and I can turn it in right there. So the assignment actually wasn't done, I didn't answer all the questions. So I can just cancel, unsubmit, and then that'll just bring it right back. And I, now I can edit it all I want and then return it back to the teachers so they can grade it. The next thing I want to talk about is Quizlet. So we do a lot of work with vocab in English, and we do mandatory... So, we do a lot of work with vocab in English, and we do mandatory bookwork in the class. And I'm not saying I don't like the bookwork, but it doesn't help, like, it doesn't help the words stick in my brain. So, I'll do the bookwork, and then I'll go onto Quizlet so I can learn the words from here. So, on, on here, I can just learn all these words. I can create like a mock test so I can study for the quiz. And these are all created by Mr. Bamford. So, he just put together all these lists of words, so I can just study them right from That's all I have.
Any questions for Billy? Okay?
I mean, we'll just wait till the end and-
Yeah, okay, perfect.
...questions in general.
Rachel?
Any meeting, mighty mo.
Oh, okay.
This is Rachel. Another one of our extraordinary children.
So, I'm gonna be talking about Spanish and what we do in the Spanish class. So, when we first walk into the Spanish class, Ms. Watson, right there, she posts a question every day, and so she'll post it, and it'll show up right there. And then I'll type my answer here. And then, once I think it's right, I submit it, and then, once everyone has submitted it, all of their answers show up right here. So, everyone in the class can see them, and she can see them as well. And then we'll talk about what everyone said and figure out what the right answer was after that. And then she, like in the English class, she can post documents like this, and it'll just bring us right to the document, and we can answer all the questions. And then, once they're done, you can just go back and turn them in. So, that's that. And then, I was also going to talk about, I found an online agenda, so I don't have to write my assignments in the paper version. I have this website. So, if I have a homework assignment to do, then I just click on that, and then I can type in what it's called, and then I put the due date, and then I click what class it's for. And then that sets it, and it'll tell you how long you have to finish it. And then you can also have, when you put all of your classes in and what time you have them during the day, it'll give you an entire schedule for your day. And while you're in classes, it'll tell you how much longer you have in the class. Yeah. So, you know when you get to leave. And, and it'll tell you-
Rachel never uses that.
No. Of course not.
Oh.
And then it'll tell you what tasks you have coming up. And then you can also put in exams, and it'll tell you when you have to do those. So, it, it takes a while to set it up because you have to put in all of the individual classes and when they are, but once you have it set up, then it's like super easy. And I like it a lot better than the regular agenda. It's much more organized for me.
What's it called?
Uh, it's called My Study Life.
My Study Life. And doesn't that one also prompt you to study for your exams and quizzes?
Yeah, if you set your, you, you can put in exams that you have, or if you want to, like, if a teacher gives you a review packet, you can set it as a revision or a reminder rather than just an assignment, and it'll tell you that you have to study. Okay.
This is Jocelyn.
Hi.
Hi, Jocelyn.
Another extraordinary student.
Okay, so I got the Spanish portion, or I, Rachel just had the Spanish. I got the science. And Mr. Protheer at the, not at the beginning of class, but at the beginning of the year, he showed us this website, and it, right here, it had this, in our, in our book, we got a textbook. This is the first unit. These are, you know, it follows. And instead of carrying around a textbook, we can just carry around the computer that has the same information, except here are those videos, which is obviously not in the book. And if I was to click there, every unit has a video that explains if you didn't understand it, reading it, it had video versions. If you missed a lab, or if something in one of the units you didn't understand, there's labs that explains everything for every single unit. Um, what else? Oh, under videos sometimes at the bottom, obviously not this week, they used to have videos of, there were live videos, and sometimes there's animals in zoos, and it will tell you about what they're doing and what they've done. Here, there's visuals. Um, here, let me find one. For every unit, there's a visual. It might start playing, but here's an example.
(Inaudible) self-adjusted.
Like that. Um, let me go back. Yeah, that's pretty much it.
And this is linked to the textbook that you were using, right?
Yeah. Mr. Protheer doesn't use Google Classroom. I think it's easier for him to just talk on the board because, yeah, much. Yeah, that's pretty much it. I don't have the, but yeah, that's it.
And he's one, like, he's one of the teachers that decided to do the pilot with us, who, he's still learning Google Classroom, but at the same time, he's still implementing the technology through, I think, does he use Google Docs?
Yeah, we use it. We share.
Yeah, so they're still using the Google Docs and sharing information. He's not 100% comfortable with Google Classroom as of yet, but he's still being able to use the technology in the, in the classroom, so. That kind of goes, Mr. York, towards your question about earlier.
That's what I thought. I see.
And finally, we have Emily. Yet another extraordinary student.
At the start of the second semester, I transferred into the pilot program, and up until that point, I had been in a regular class, all pen and paper, notebooks. I'm here to talk about some of the pros and cons that I found while being in the pilot. As for pros, I think it's a lot more organized. Like Rachel, I also sort of retired my agenda, and I use the My Study Life program as well. On, this is Google Classroom for my community class. I, I do like having the fact that I can see when my assignments are done or when they're due. I think that the class itself is a lot more engaging with technology. Mrs. Angie had mentioned before that when we would, a class would sort of borrow the school computers, it would take everyone half the class just to log on. There would always be some sort of issue with, you know, printing, or just something would always go wrong. But now that we have our own computers, it's a lot easier. Everyone logs right on. It's pretty easy to submit your work, and it's also pretty hard to forget that something is due. It tells you right over here, what's due tomorrow, or what's due right after that. Another pro that I found was my geometry class recently started assigning homework online, even though they're not part of the pilot. And instead of having to go home to do this, if, you know, I was in study hall and I had no other homework to do, I could easily access this online from my laptop. As for cons, I'm a very visual person, which a laptop is very visual, but I find it easier for me to remember things when I write them down. So, I do sort of have to go through my notes again and review them a little more than I would have with a notebook and pencil. But all in all, I do, I do like being in the pilot. I am happy I switched. It's, it definitely is a change, and it's, it's quite a bit different than, you know, taking everything, everything is online in this class. All our tests and quizzes, which was definitely a different feel, but it was pretty easy to get used to. And finally, my final pro was that I know that when the time comes for me to go to college or to join the workforce and to pursue a career, I know that with the currently advancing technology, it's something I'm going to have to use, and I like being able to use it now. And it also comes in handy for other classes now that I'm familiar with Google Docs.
What do you use to take your notes down?
Um, well, on our community page, sometimes they will post something, like a blank piece of paper with the video. Let's see if I can find one. I know that Mr. Cooper posted one lately.
You don't have one place you can go and find all your notes for a certain class or anything?
I'm sure that I could do that, but I'm still getting used to the system. On here, this is a note sheet that was attached to a video, and these were the notes that I took while watching it.
So, is that just typing?
One of the things that the kids have mentioned a couple of times is that they've retired their agendas to use My Study Life. And as you know, the agendas are a significant cost for our school, as are textbooks. Today, with Mr. Perez, I met with Gail, a Gail representative. As you know, I have some databases that I already use with the kids in the school, and those are Biography in Contexts and History in Contexts. Well, it turns out that they play well with Google Classroom. So, that means that teachers can take resources right out of those databases and put them up for the kids. That includes videos, it includes articles that have been vetted, different things that are going to save money over time, because the teachers won't have to pay additional fees to go out and get these things. They're already vetted, they're already paid for, and we can use them. We talked a little bit about something called Classroom in Contexts today, where for pennies on the dollar, literally, instead of having to pay for external textbooks, we can, at 25 cents on the dollar, this is the price that Hugh quoted me, we can replace the textbooks with electronic versions that the teachers can use.
I was going to ask a question on that. I may know, we know about that. The, the science class where the teacher was able to put the book up, is that something that came along with our purchase of the hardback?
Yeah, yeah, that was a late, that was a, the, that was a link.
We got that link because we bought the books.
Correct, yeah.
Because what we have found as we've gone through the process, that the publishers are not willing to move, so if a book is $80 on a hard print, it's $80 on a computer print. The only difference being that it's updated on an annual basis or yearly or every month or whatever, where a hardback is, till you buy it again, it's not updated, so.
You're buying the content, you're not buying the paper.
Right, yeah.
And, and that was some of the, you know, we would have to talk to that individual a little bit more moving forward.
We also wanted to talk to Hollis Brookline because they have moved towards it, and it looks like Nashua is going to also be moving towards it.
I know that was part of our, our process as we were going through this, was to begin moving to that now. You know, there's, just, just like we talked about, teachers are going to be students, and I think one of the students, you know, you mentioned, who liked to write things down, there's going to be students that-
Yeah.
-the technology may not work for them, so.
Yeah, and, you know, and it was interesting going to, you know, when we went down to Burlington, Brian, you came with us, and it was interesting to hear some of the teachers too, because I know one of the questions that I had for some of the teachers, and I know, I think me actually had the question, "What do you do when, you know, it's just, it's not appropriate right now?" And she said, "Students know. Put your laptops away, pen and paper." Like, it's just students are, they know that when the teacher says it, it happens, you know? And if it doesn't happen, then it's addressed, you know, with whoever it needs to be addressed with, so. I think it's a, it is a learning process, and, you know, if we go back to the proposal moving forward, if you don't have any more questions for the students, we'll go into the proposal piece.
Were, were most of you in the eighth grade at LMS?
Yep.
So, how do you, you know, that was basically book and mortar. So, how do you, half a year into it, which process did you enjoy? Do you enjoy doing it more with the technology?
Yeah.
Yeah. Definitely. I am not organized. I am not an organized person. And so, a lot of my grades went down last year because I would lose homeworks, but on the computer, it's all just saved in my drive automatically. So, if I forget to turn something in, I can always find it. And so, I keep, I like, can keep track of all of my homeworks a lot better than I did last year.
Do you feel like you're learning more, or do you feel like you're learning differently? Or do you feel like you're learning differently and you're learning more? I don't know what the, I'm just, anybody have any response to that?
I think it's both, because I, like, really absorb more information if we're using technology, just because the way that, like, I'm immersed in, like, the learning. So, normally, if, like, you're writing on a board, then I'm less likely to pay attention if I have a computer in my hands, so. But I just like, I like it more just for that.
Someone behind you agrees very strongly. I'm not even gonna guess who it is.
It's a resemblance, sir.
Anybody else have a comment about that? No?
Go ahead, Rachel.
Okay. I think I am learning a lot more than I was before, because now, whenever I have a question, they've given us the resource, find the information myself, rather than just asking for the answers. So, like, before, I could just go to my teacher and say, "What's this answer?", and they would tell me. But now, if I have a question, I can look for the answer myself, and they've taught us how to find resources that are more reliable than others. So, like, I can find the answer for myself, and that is helping me absorb the information a lot more.
I want to, I want to thank you, students, for coming here this evening. I, I feel like your, your contribution to me, at least, has been to absolutely convince me that the one-on-one model is the right way to go, and to show me the answer to my question, because I heard you learning differently, and I heard you applying computer technology. I heard you doing, you know, critical thinking. I heard you doing a lot of things that I applaud. I heard you active in your learning, not passive. Now, all of those things I applaud, so I really thank you very much because you really absolutely convinced me that it is very important that districts, district go forward as quickly as we can with the one-on-one computer model. So, thank you very much.
And also, to that, I think, I think it was Emily that said it's setting up for, you know, future life, both in college and work.
Yes.
And to Rachel's point about being unorganized, I'm also super unorganized, so don't worry about it. I literally live my life off my watch and my phone. It tells me where I'm supposed to be at any given point in time. So, I think just that process of being involved in that's gonna, that's gonna help in the future, so that's great. I'll also be curious, the My Study Life and all agendas seem really interesting. Nate might not answer this. The, the due dates on my classroom, is that integrated into like Google Calendar for the classroom? I wonder if you could just bring all those together, and every student could have, could have an agenda basically in Google Calendar.
Each, each class on Google Classroom, there's a button that says "About", and under "About" it has a calendar.
Okay.
Within that calendar, when I put a due date in for an assignment-
It'll auto-
-it auto-populates in there.
So, the students could see that for all their classes, then? They just check off which ones they want to see and show the combined activity calendar?
I believe, I can't answer definitively on that. I have to, I want to defer to Jason on the Google Calendar piece, because I know there's some parts of that that we couldn't necessarily fully integrate. I, I would assume that Google has the capability to do that-
Oh, yeah.
-knowing that I can do it personally, but even right now, if we can, I know with each, each class, you can go ahead and get a week or a month or whatever, so.
So, the teachers that use the, that are in the pilot program, are they finding themselves engaged with their students after hours because their students are sending them questions? Or, and how, as you're going through that process, does it better streamline your grading process and things so that you're spending more time either researching your next day's stuff that you're teaching and stuff? Is it making, not easier, but is it making it in a process that's more enjoyable for the stuff that you're, can focus on what's more beneficial for the students? I mean, I mean, is it good for the teachers, too?
Jen, you want to speak?
Absolutely. I'm Jen Watson, I'm a Spanish teacher, who's part of the program. For me, it makes my job a lot easier, especially when students are out. And since we have block scheduling, we see them every other day, so if they're out on that one day, I won't see them again for two days. So, if, a lot of time has passed since I last have contacted them. And I actually, I had a student out, I don't know, probably a month ago, and he was still, he was alive, he was at home in bed, and he was sending me messages through Google Classroom, like, "Hey, Ms. Watson, what are you guys doing right now?", while his class was going on, while his seat was empty. And I actually, I had a student out, I don't know, probably a month ago, and he was still, he was alive, he was at home in bed, and he was, um, sending me messages, um, through Google Classroom, being like, "Hey, Ms. Watson, what are you guys doing right now?", while his class was going on, while his seat was empty. So I was like, "Oh, we're doing this, this, and this right now, now we're gonna watch this video." People didn't really understand it, so if you don't understand it, don't worry about it, but he was caught up without coming to school. So that saved me time in the long run, um, you know, trying to give him one-on-one attention, um, when he came back in, and that takes me away from fourteen other students who still need me. So it was nice to be able to kill two birds with one stone, I think.
Imagine, there'd be no more snow days.
I was gonna say.
Blizzard bags.
I know, that's kind of a controversial topic, but, um,
Can I speak to that?
Yeah, go ahead, Nate, because that kinda goes along, you and I had this conversation.
We had that conversation, and certainly something that I thought was, um, but I did, I'll reiterate what, what Jen said, is the, the idea that, you know, most students, when they ask, they come to me, um, saying, "I'm gonna be out for a few days, what do I need to do?" And I just say, "Going to Google Classroom, what we're gonna be doing is on there." So I had a student who, during, uh, Christmas vacation, was out in New Zealand, and part of the homework was to watch the Republican debate, and he was watching the Republican debate and responding to a question on, on Google Classroom from New Zealand. Um, so that'll just give you an idea of the, the far reach, um, that you have.
Yeah.
But it also allows you to, one of the other positive things is instantaneous feedback that you can get on things. So like Jen had showed me this thing, Kahoot, where you can use the devices as a responding device, and it sort of makes it a game, they get more points the faster they, they answer, and you can know literally right then and there, you know, rather than them raising their hand, "Do I get it, do I not get it?", you get some instantaneous feedback. As far as Blizzard bags, too, though, I think you can do a lot with what they call the flip them up, uh, for those students who've had me for economics the past four or five years, they may like it or, or bitterly hate it. But, uh, their, their homework really is to go home, watch a video that I've created. This device makes that a lot easier, because you have the ability to screencast your presentations, you can put it right onto Google Classroom, you can embed questions into them, so the video pauses, they can't move forward, they can't skip questions. You can see if they watched the entire video or just five minutes of the video, what percentage of the class got question six wrong, what percentage of the class got question eight, right or wrong, and then usually after that, there's a discussion board in which they have to apply that comprehension-based knowledge in a more analytical or evaluative way. So I think that, that's really how I foresee doing a lot of my classes in the future. It's a slow process to build it, but we're getting there. I think on a Blizzard bag, or on a day in which there is no school, if you had that ready to go, uh, because I, I think there was, and Mr. York brought up that concern about, is what, is the Blizzard bag work necessarily what they're working on right then and there? And I think you have really the potential to be picking up a lesson of what you would've been doing on that day right then and there, and you won't miss a beat. And then if it's on Monday, you're coming in Tuesday and, and doing the work that you otherwise would've been doing. So I, I think there's a lot of potential, um, when it comes to that.
Just one more thing, uh, because Nate mentioned Kahoot. I purchased a irespond for our school several years ago, it was five thousand dollars. Five thousand dollars for a classroom set of clickers that we would no longer have to ever buy again. So that's five thousand dollars cost saving to our district. And Kahoot is free.
I just have one more question. So it sounds like a great deal of the students' work and even the organization, their life is, is on their, their Chromebooks, so. And they're new, so everybody is just using them this year, so what happens, though? Is there a backup to the work that they've done? I mean, what happens if it's
Everything that they do is in the cloud. Everything that they do is in the cloud.
Okay, so then, so it's not just on the Chromebook that, that they can access it with another?
On any computer.
On any device.
Yep, yep. They just have to log into their Google account.
They don't ever lose, they don't ever lose, lose their work as a general rule.
No excuses.
No.
No more dogging my homework.
It's made a huge difference.
You can say that.
You can see the last time they've edited a document, I mean, I can tell if they've worked on something, uh, seven twenty-three, um, before coming into class.
Yeah, literally, you can see the entire history of what the student has done.
Now, I think we've addressed this before, but can you, as can the teachers then correct, add, um, comments and things like that, and send it right back?
Yes, so you can do that, you can do that right in there. And then you can, there's even programs that make comprehension grading real quick, so you can pre-program it, like, you use, you can essentially create a Google form, you put the questions in, I put my answer key in, it grades it automatically, and then I can spend all my time, more of my time grading the, the written stuff than the
And the kids are collaborating with each other as well. I, I mean, I've, I walk through a lot, and, um, especially in the morning with, because Nate and Alex Skarelli, the humanities model, they have the thirty-seven, they have the whole thirty-seven group in there. And they're in, like, groups of three, four, and they're working on something, and they may say something to each other, but they're all working on the same thing, and it's kind of, it's kind of cool to see. You know, and they're working on the same PowerPoint, you know, one kid's, they're working on a big PowerPoint, I know, one time I walked in, they're working on a PowerPoint presentation, one kid had slides one through three, another kid had different, and they're all, but they're all putting it into that one, one PowerPoint, so.
Recently had a student, we were working on a combined assignment, one student was absent, she was a very diligent student, so as she was sick at home during that class period, signed on in that collaborative document, and they all started rolling their eyes down. Lindsay just signed into this again.
How is the network holding up with all, with the kids that we have on it right now?
So far, so good.
They're making activity in the school.
I mean, so I don't think, I don't think you've ever had a crash, have you?
No, the, the, it's done really well, uh, with these.
And, you know, and realistically, these kids have a cellphone in their pocket, and they're hooked up to the wireless, too, you know, you know, so, I mean, it's, it's going, it's working.
We used to have regular crashes, but ever since, um, Jason Pelletier came in and redid the wireless, things have been working so well, we're very pleased.
Yeah, yeah, even in the main off, like, the main office, even we would have some drops in, like, the conference room, and
It makes doing research
Yep.
a lot easier, too, because before, you'd have to compete with the rest of the school to go ahead and try to get into the lab, uh, but if we're trying to do any sort of research, we can just do it, uh, right then and there.
Now, when they go on to, like, the science book, we saw the science in the different unit, can they go in and highlight things and save it on their, like, on their personal drive, are those downloaded, that they can make notes and highlight in the textbook?
I believe the Annenberg textbooks, that is, is that possible?
The online book, you couldn't highlight anything, but if you copied all of it and then put it onto a doc, you could.
However, with the resources from Gail that I was talking about just now, you can not only highlight it, you can make notes, you can download it to your own drive, and it will citation, it will do the citations for the kids, it will, it, it's really pretty nice, so.
I'd also say there's a lot of, uh, not to push the district even further, uh, but there are, there are a lot of great free resources out there that we could certainly use to supplement, supplement all the details.
Spend away. Spend away. Feel free, spend away.
Uh, so I, I just think it's
We do do a lot with free resources.
I think everyone agrees in the vision, I think it, you know, it's how do we, how do we get these devices in everybody's hands?
Hmm.
And, you know, for some families, it's easier than others to come up with the money, and, you know, as we have more of the classes doing it, you don't want there to be a small pocket of the population that can't take classes, that they wanna take and participate because they don't have a device, or there's not a class available. Because, you know, there's so many people doing the one-on-one, there's not a teacher, you know, if there's a teacher that isn't doing the one-on-one, so it's finding the good balance.
Yeah.
But, I mean, I think we all, uh, see the value in it, and how it's really helping.
Yeah, and Jason and I, uh, started, we actually started, I was telling Jim earlier, we, Jason and I just started a initial conversation about wanting to stick with the Samsung, possibly, but, you know, the committee last year for the pilot, they picked the, the thirteen inch, can you just put it up? Yeah, like, the thirteen inch, that's the one we picked last year. But then Jason and I started talking today, for about two twenty-five, I think for two hundred and twenty-five dollars, you can get the ten inch one. And for some kids, that may be okay. I mean, we, for the first round of pilot, we wanted, you know, we wanted to see how the bigger screen, you know, we weren't sure if we were gonna continue with the smarter balance, which we know now we're going towards the SAT at the, at the junior level. So that was one of our main objectives, too, is some of the testing that we still do at the high schools, so the NWA, the, um, uh, smarter balance, because we, we didn't have that. But now that we're going towards more SAT, we may be able to get away with a ten inch instead of a
And I, I bought this, just bought this myself last year, just knowing that we might be going towards this, and I've used it every day since last year, and I, I haven't had an issue doing the pilot or anything else with, with this.
Yeah, so just giving that option, um, three ninety-five compared to two twenty-five, I'm sorry to the parents that bought the three ninety-five. But, you know, we, you know, that, that's just, that was initial conversation today, so that, we are kind of starting those conversations, and that's why, when we met as a group, I'll get back to the proposal piece, you know, when we met as a committee, you know, we wanted to, you know, we wanted to come back to you and say, you know what, we really think we could do this next year, but we wanted to think realistically at the same time. And that's why we, we wanna offer, again, to the sophomores, classes, possibly get another thirty-five to forty students, so we can add another section of humanities, possibly. Then, again, I'm going to be going, you know, uh, eighth grade information night, I'm gonna present to the eighth grader, eighth grade parents. The following day, I think it's the tenth or the eleventh, I'll be down with the middle school with guidance, with Jody and the two other guidance counselors, talking to the eighth graders themselves about the one-to-one pilot. Um, the only thing that we're gonna need from the eighth graders coming in is, we're gonna need a pretty set number by mid-year, because Jody's, with the new infinite campus, Jody can create the master schedule a lot earlier.
What will happen if, um, the sophomore class?
Mm-hmm.
We had one student say that, they already tell us, say they moved into the pilot program, but let's say thirty students that are in sophomore, freshman class, be sophomore, decide they wanna be in the program, they wanna be part of it, and what, what happens if eighty out of the hundred students in the eighth grade wanna be part of it?
Well, if we have eighty, if we have eighty students, that, that's perfect, because that's two sections of humanities right there, um, so.
We have to be equipped to be able to
Jason says we can
Absorb that process, absorb the students into the classrooms and have enough teachers, or is it, they may be using it in some classrooms.
Twenty-three teachers who said that they would
Yeah, so we had, you know, just from, I know Alex and, um, Alex and Nate themselves said that they would, they would teach across the board if they could right now, one-to-one. So, but then we have a couple, we have, um, I have one, two, th- three teachers that teach ninth and tenth grade English, that, they're good to go next year. And then I have four of the social studies teachers that either teach tenth or ninth grade that are ready to go as well. Um, and Alex and Nate both said that if they had to, you know, they would, they wouldn't mind teaching a freshman and a sophomore, get, you know, both. But we have, we have the teachers that are willing to do it and be involved.
And you talked about the small population that might not be able to afford the devices. One of the things that, um, Mr. Pelletier, Jason and I have been talking about is replacing the cart that's in the library with Google Chromebooks, so that if children can't afford them, they can come down, check one out, and use it for their classes. Because anybody can sign into a Chromebook, and it's just a matter of keeping track of who's got them and keeping them charged for them, so.
Just, just a couple of comments, I mean, you read a lot of literature about flipped classrooms and, and, thank you. We read a lot of literature about, uh, career, college-ready skill sets, thank you, and, um, you've integrated those together seamlessly, thank you. And, uh, we hear a lot about really having our students become more and more prepared for the real world, thank you. And I would just like to express to all of the teachers that are involved in this, um, my sincere appreciation, uh, for, in, for what you're doing and the courage to be leaders in your field, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just, a quick, a couple things for the students. Do you look forward to this, the rest of your days in high school, working with a Chromebook, or would you rather go back the other way?
I would, I wanna do sophomore year for sure.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, and then, you jumped into it partway through. Do, the four of you know others that are looking forward to, like, doing this possibly next year? I mean, have you talked it up with others and?
My friend Sophia regretted not doing it when I was telling her about my classes, so I think she wants to do it next year.
I've had a handful of students come and be like, you know, "If it's possible, can I do it next year?"
Can we poll?
What's that?
Can we poll, the, the students, say, would you want to hop into this next year?
Yeah, we were actually, um, Jody Callan and I actually, um, wanted to see how many we would get initial sophomores, yeah, we wanted to see how many we would get extra.
We can put a survey up in two minutes
Yep.
and have the kids go through it on Naviance, it will take no time at all to get you that data.
And I, I think I've had, um, I know I've had one eighth grade parent already email me.
It has to be a buzz in the middle school right now, that, you know, because they must have, I mean, it's a small town, siblings, siblings, friends,
Right.
you know, must know that, I mean, it seems that the ninth graders are really enjoying the program, so I'm sure that they're free guys to come into the school, you talked about.
When I tell my other, because I've got other sections of classes on Google Classroom and doing stuff, and I, when I tell them that I teach a group of freshmen that all have Chromebooks, they're usually incensed that they don't, don't have them this far.
So I heard you mention that some of the students in the eleventh and twelfth grade, some of the teachers would like to
Yeah.
turn their, so why not open that Pandora's box and allow them that process if their students wanna purchase a thing and?
Well, I think, I, there's a couple of things that we don't mind if, and a lot of teachers will say to me, you know what, if they have the Chromebook, I let them, or I let, if they even have a MacBook, or if they have a laptop, a lot of the upperclassmen teachers will say, if they wanna take notes on their laptop and they're doing it appropriately, I let them take their laptop out. I think what happens is if we, once they get up to the eleventh and twelfth grade with the pilot piece, or trying to figure out sections of, of groups to get enough of the juniors to do it, so. If we, if we didn't go the full, if we didn't go a full, like, eleventh grade class, it would be really tough, and I would, I think, uh, Jody Callanan would have my head. I think that was the thought, anyway, going into the program, was to start in, the chart that, um, was shown here, as far as, before it all becomes full, is do the pilot and move on and just expand it that way. And so, and that's kind of like our, our proposal when we got together, is to have, re, do the pilot again with the freshmen, see how many sections we can get next year. But at the same time, create a lot of PD opportunities for the, the building. Now, it's interesting, because on March eighth, Nate, Jen, and Alex Skarelli are actually putting on a Google Classroom, um, PD for that day, and I believe you have, like, you're doing that, too, right? Are you doing that, part of that with them? I know Alex and Jen, I, I thought you were, too. I think they have about twenty-five to twenty-eight teachers district-wide already signed up for it. That's what Alex was telling me the other day, so it's a buzz throughout the district as well, I believe.
Good.
So.
So do you have any other questions for me? Can I, can I ask a favor for you to all consider, um, going forward? Because I, I really enjoyed evaluating the program, um, and I really enjoyed getting to know these students and talking to them for interviews. I would really like to continue to follow them through their high school career, and, um, because I intend to have my doctorate next month, I'm gonna be done, okay? And I can see writing grants that would allow me to continue my research with these kids. So if you could take it under advisement and give me, and give it some thought, I'd really appreciate it, because I think that what they're experiencing, um, being the first, being the pioneers, if you will, is, um, very valuable.
Thank you. Any other questions? So I'll be, if you guys, if you want, I'll be back in a, another couple months with a, another update, so.
Great.
Excellent. Okay.
Thank you very much. Thank you mostly students, thank you for being here. Now go home, make sure you get all your homework, are you doing your homework now when you were sitting here, right?
I have to tie it, too, we need more people tied here.
Kind of high standards.
Uniform?
I wish they could manipulate the text, like, customize notes, so they can go back and find what they were, what they wanted to study. Like, you cannot, like, the nook or
Pushing return?
I was going to say, John, we can't go anywhere.
The technology is emotional table now, it has to be both of them.
I really enjoyed that, having the kids here. Makes me convinced, we've got to get a smart board, here, smart board technology. I'm going to do that, I was going to wait until the spring, but I'm just going to get it done.
I mentioned the last time.
Got to get it done.
All right, Frank, you're up with your audit trail.
Maybe down the corner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I wish I could tell you I'm following up that great presentation by the students and teachers with something equally as exciting.
Where's the sleep?
I'll talk to the superintendent tomorrow about where he places me on the agenda, I think this might be by- With that being said, Mr. Chair, this, the audit report for 2015 was placed into your packet, I don't anticipate you've even looked at it, and I did, we did receive today the hard copy as well as I passed out to you. I just want to take a few moments and briefly, just highlight some of the audit report for you, and certainly would be prepared to answer any questions you have this evening or any time in, in the future. I, I do want to recognize some individuals, and I always shy away from doing this, so I'll omit someone. But in doing this, this is the third year for the district that I've completed the financial audit, and all three years we've worked with Plasnik and Sanderson as our outside auditing firm, and Ashley Miller in particular, who's the audit, kind of the audit head for her group, is very easy to work with, and I think the result of this audit is, is the partnership that we've been able to develop between the outside auditors and our, our staff here. Some of this, thanks to our internal folks, Anne Inomorati, who is our chief accountant, Michelle Flynn, who worked on the team as well, Holly Messenger, HR, Colleen Forth, our payroll coordinator, and two individuals who are no longer with us, but still in our hearts and our thoughts, they're here on the surface and are here within the district, Jody Belavee, who was our former chief accountant, who's retired, was still involved with this audit. She was, we called her our external consultant. And then Christine Levacia, who was our former payroll coordinator, who went off to another district, Pelham, was, was also involved with this. So I want to, I want to publicly acknowledge those individuals in putting this together. Again, Mr. Chair, if I may, just a couple of highlights on the, on the letter received from the auditor. There are a number of audit findings which are being addressed today and will be completed by the end of this year. I won't go over them right now unless you, you ask. But one of the areas that I did want to highlight for you is in the area of, two areas, of old checks, still-dated checks, if you will, that the district for years has been holding on as outstanding items. We have to, I'm pleased to report, all of those items have been cleared, the checks, individuals have been contacted, say, hey, we got a check here for you, you never cashed it. So we've been able to resolve all of those, and those that we weren't able to, we did have to turn some of them over to the New Hampshire as abandoned property. So those items have all been cleared. Also, on page two of that letter, I'm sorry, page three of the letter, there is the Student Activity Fund exceptions, and we are working on that. And you will also, tonight, there is an amended Student Activity Policy that I'm putting forth for the board's consideration. But one of the immediate action items we, we have already taken and resolved is the Ministry of Assistance, who really run the Student Activity Accounts, are no longer signers on the account. That was one of the key highlights that we, one of the takeaways that we got from the audit of this year.
What pages are they on?
That's on page three of the letter.
Cover letter.
It's a cover letter from the auditor.
Student Activity Funds.
This one here, John. This, this cover?
It's on line.
Project at Sanders.
Inside here?
It's probably in your packet, it's in the packet.
Oh, oh, it's online, it's not in here? Yeah, oh, okay.
But while you have that in your hand, I did want to highlight, if you will, on page 44, Student Activity Funds, we have given a lot of conversation to, and tonight, providing you an amended policy, really begins the process of looking deeply into Student Activity Funds to make sure that we pick up on all the recommendations being put forth by auditors. By example, I wanted to show you this evening, on page 44, Schedule Number Four, which is our Student Activity Funds. These are monies that basically are generated by students, for students and for the benefit of the students. But I, I wanted to show you this evening on this schedule, just the amount of money that goes through the Student Activity Funds. And as you can see, we, we started with a balance of about $170,000 to start the school year in 20, this would be the school year 2014-15. We took in and distributed over a half a million dollars each in those categories. That's a lot of money. So, tonight, again, I have put forward to you a Student Activity Policy, which I think will highlight a lot of the key areas that the auditors have been discussing with us over a three-year period, that full policy will now provide us with our ability as, as an SAU to go in and look at these funds and make some strong recommendations to handle some things maybe differently than we have over the past, and certainly put more checks and balances in as well. And again, I am prepared to answer any questions you may have about the audit report specific, and certainly Ashley would be, at your request, would be more than willing to come on to a meeting and explain the audit report here as well.
I would, I would think at a, at a minimum, the balancing of the checkbook on these Student Activity Funds should be removed out of the schools and brought to the SAU, because it needs, we need a, just for the amount of money that goes through there, a, a set of eyes that are different than the set of eyes that are processing said checks. Maybe that's in another part of that process.
I will address that at a, at a latter point. We are developing some procedures which will address certainly the area of reconcilment, the area of oversight, the area really to, to roll back, again, tonight, this evening, with this, with the policy being, that I am recommending for approval, really will address, you know, we have to roll it back a little bit and look at these funds and say, what is exactly a Student Activity Fund, and do all of these funds that you see. And more specifically to the high school, because I think you'll see the high school has by far the greatest number of Student Activity Accounts, and the first question I would ask as an auditor, and the auditors have asked this question, are all those funds truly Student Activity Funds? And if they're not, they, they honestly don't belong in the Student Activity Fund. So that's, the policy starts and then we go from there and start developing the procedures to put far more checks and balances. Again, the numbers can, are staggering, the amount of money that goes through those accounts, and we, we need to make sure and ensure that we're living up to our fiduciary responsibility to the students. It's student money, that we, we have all the checks and balances in place that we possibly can have.
Mr. Chair?
I want to, I want to thank Frank for bringing this forward tonight. We had had a, a very brief conversation about this, and Frank had pointed out to me his, you know, his concerns about the amount of money and the, the checks and balances that existed there. So I want to express my sincere appreciation to the business minister for bringing that forward and for working on policy and procedures that will tighten up that whole area. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
It's always nice to get a compliment from the superintendent, just a compliment in general when you're the BA.
You get lots of thumbs ups, don't you?
Yeah. You want to say that again? You may get a thumb. As long as it's not a finger.
Fair enough to mention-
I think I get, I think I get the finger, I just don't see it too often.
I think it's nice we're beginning to-
Television focus.
At least, we're beginning to get some policies established to control these. I know we talked about this as a board for some time. Remember last year when the numbers came out, we were very concerned as far as who's operating these funds and what's going in the funds. So I think it's high time that we do, throw a little more strict measures on them.
And again, I'll elaborate a little bit further when we get to the policy itself, but I think that policy will drive a lot of those controls and those checks and balances. At least that's my intent.
Anything else on Frank?
That is it, unless there's any questions.
Well, and again, I'll just say to the board that obviously you just received the report and there's a lot of information in there, so if you do have any questions after going through it at our next meeting on the second, feel free, we can discuss at that time. Please do, welcome questions. So now bring us to our enrollment report, just sideways.
The enrollment report, when you look at the total enrollment, it's kind of uneventful. We are 1393, at the beginning of the year we hit a 1404 in December and 1396, so it's basically not a real changing number. But I would like to draw our attention to the, the numbers in our elementary school, and specifically, I think if we take a look at the numbers that we're seeing in the pre-K, they've gone from 35 students in September to 42 students now. And if we look at kindergarten, 54 to 58. And we're looking now, next year, we already have 67 students who are registered, and I suspect we'll probably gain about 10 more students between now and actually start at school next year. So, I know that we're projecting declining enrollment, however, there is a bit of a trend here that might indicate to us that we shouldn't jump on the declining enrollment bandwagon too quick, because some of the cohorts are starting to come in a little bit more, more robustly than what we initially anticipated, and I shouldn't think we should watch this closely because it will make a difference in how we budget going into next year.
Quite a drop in a high school, is that typical from year to year?
Year, just two months ago, we would drop 10 students.
That's what I mean, I mean, is that?
Notice four of them out of district placements, is that, were those going to night school? Were they special ed-related, do we know?
I don't know, I know-
And wouldn't they still be students though? Would they still count as students?
We have a, or I have, I don't know if you have, a listing of where all the kids have left.
Yeah.
And certainly we look at that, graduated, 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 placed out of district, placed out of district, placed out of district, placed out of district, so that's eight students right there.
But placed out of district?
In January.
Is that, is that their choice or our choice, or is that a process?
If, I'd have to look into that more, whether it's a special education placement or whether it's a choice, whether they went, I'm suspecting, I have, let me look into that and give it back to you, I don't want to guess.
They're not considered enrolled in this field anymore, once we place them out of district?
Well, this, that's a good question. They should still be technically, they should technically be enrolled in the district, they should technically still be enrolled in the district, that's a good point.
I would only see how you move them off the count.
Yeah. I mean, there's five, one, two, three, four, five kids that graduated, let me get you a better answer on that, I, I need to get that, I don't have that answer.
And a lot of it's the movements too, it's in, it's in school, like, they get enough credits to go from 10th to 11th grade, so the 10th grade goes down, the 11th grade goes up.
Probably total student count is down 10.
Yes. Because if they're, if they're credit short, they have to go a whole semester.
That makes sense then, so as the semester ends-
You see a whole bunch, yeah. I think all the 10th grader drops are, they graduate to 11th grade.
In reality, it doesn't level out until their junior year, unless they take something in summer school.
Yeah, all five from 10th grade are, went to 11th grade.
Makes sense.
Because they all make it happen in their senior year.[1375.16][1375.16](laughter) Because they don't want to be around for a senior year from a summer.
That's when they can see that.
They can see it, that's it, they're more motivated.
All right. Michelle, you going to send that off to the budget committee?
I will.
Thank you. Do we normally, normally send them the audit report also?
Sure, we, we'll, we'll PDF a copy of it and it'll be linked on the, on the website.
Okay, we just send it to them?
Yep.
All right.
My more than capable assistant will take care of that.
Sure, there's a few members are waiting to look at it.
I know they are. Just wait in anticipation of the audit report.
All right, which will then bring us, there we are, the committee reports, budget committee? Again, we didn't need it except for after-
Be the next week?
The deliberative, no.
Any votes, any recommendations change?
Do you have those counts, Michelle?
Um.
We revoked on two.
Didn't we do that already? They, um-
I don't think we did.
You know what, let me look at, I have it right on my desk, I have it right now.
They probably totally supported the, the $1 budget.
No, it's the voted down?
Scucci did not, I know for certain.
The dollar was too much for him, huh?
I'm pretty certain he did not on that one. It's the principle.
That's a deep principle, man.
We just revoked on two.
We voted on Article Three, they voted 530, so it was recommended. And on Article Five, they voted 350, so it was not recommended.
That's the $1? Just supported the facility one drops, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
They did, 800, yeah.
How could they, they couldn't revoke that?
What, the facilities one?
Yeah, they did. Also, three, oh, three was technology.
It was technology.
Technology one was three.
Was 530.
I'm sorry. I thought you meant-
They, yeah.
I could only hear, so I'm not sure when I read that, yeah.
That budget kept me going rogue, I can't-
That was it for the budget committee? No, we're not meeting, I don't know when we meet next.
At the end of March, I think.
The week after St. Patty's Day, because it was supposed to be on St. Patty's Day and I want to get next.
Good Irish.
Just, we just drink green beer and-
Pas Scucci, it's very Irish.
Financial.
Wants to hang out at the Bunkel Pub, you know, that's a very Irish pub too.
Did you go?
I haven't gone.
No?
But it might be a first time.
There you go. Any other committees meet?
We didn't make it to Park today, but there was an email, a parent on the committee couldn't make it into the building.
I forwarded it to Frank and Jim and told them, a little bit of my soul died.
Locking the people out of the building again.
All right. So with that, we'll move on to new business.
You know what it is, you need a doorbell that they push that rings in Frank's office after hours. And then that door being closed will be solved really quick.
No, because then he'll put it on my desk, I'm the one that'll have here.
No, can we just ask the superintendent to make sure it stays on Frank's desk? Does that solve that problem? Why wouldn't he move somewhere else?
Not going down that road.
He'll just-
All right, so we have, we have two job descriptions to take a look at.
Yeah, these are revisions of the, well, with the revision of the teacher evaluation system and all the various areas, what the administration team and other folks that were reviewing these, found out that we did not have job descriptions for the reading specialist and the reading teacher. So Julie Hion, Martha Thayer, Connie Farrell and Holly sat down and rewrote the job descriptions. And essentially what they did was they took the template of the classroom job descriptions and just put down the appropriate language for the two positions that we have here. The only thing they added to each was the heading and responsibilities under instruction, assessment and collaboration. I don't know a great deal more than that, I think they may be self-explanatory to you, but if you need to have Holly come in at the next meeting, she's more than ready to come in. But essentially they were job descriptions that we just did not have, and we realized that as we went through the teacher and specialist evaluation programs.
Just a quick comment, I might, under assessment, it says administrative benchmarking, blah, 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 it actually names Ames Web. I just, I don't know if I would name the software in case we change it at some point. You don't have to update the, the job description.
And the other question I have, is this a, positions that fall under the LEA contract? And so have we made sure that-
Reading specialist?
That it, it follows-
I'm not sure that's, yeah.
That process, aren't these positions under the LEA contract?
Yes.
All right, so I think they need to be made sure that they are in compliance with anything that's under that contract.
CBA compliant. Thank you.
What's that?
Occasional twisting required.
That's for the dances.
So the Ames Web is on both descriptions?
Climbing not required.
So we're just going to get more, we'll get more information on both these?
Yeah, we'll have to bring this back to you, obviously we've got some writing and some, just, you know, meeting with the LEA and we'll bring it back to you once that process is completed.
Okay. So bring us to older unfinished business, we start with policies, policy report, February 2016.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I asked Denise to review these. Just a gameplay, just a gameplay, just a gameplay. I asked Michelle, and I told you how that name came, came into my head, right? I asked Michelle to, to take some time and go through all the policies and everything, so she's really the one that has done all the legwork on this and has reviewed the policies, and I would ask her to talk to the policies and- And I would ask her to talk to the policies and what she's recommending that we do and move forward with. So it's all yours, Michelle.
Okay. Well, with the permission of the superintendent, by the way, I forgot to mention that. I don't do, I don't make any decisions without him.
That's not true.
The school board has, the school board's directed us to start rewriting the policies in the school districts. So we started with, of course, the policies. I'm just really keeping him awake, right? We started with the policies that are mandated by law. And what I think, what I told the board last time was we were gonna go through, we were gonna categorize them. So the ones that I've worked on, I have five that are for reapproval, meaning they have no changes whatsoever. We're just trying to get them all approved together as best we can. There are five or six that are, have slight amendments. Those should be no brainers. There are new ones and, and policies that we are major changes to that will go through the regular approval process for the board. And you'll see why when you, when you read them. And we have some that we're sending to legal counsel to be vetted. So the ones that are on the agenda tonight, including Frank's rewritten student, uh, activity fund policy, those, you know, that's under the new policies. Those will go through the approval. You will find that there is a policy and a procedure that are kind of split. One is under reapproval because it's never had, it doesn't have any changes, but the procedures does. And the reason I put the procedures under the amended heading was because of the draft, the way they were changed. Not that they were drastic, but they were changed. And I just thought the school board should have some input on that. And basically, that's it. So you can start wherever you like.
So I just have a quick question. Why do we have to reapprove something that's not changed?
Because you need to, um, you need to change the date. That means it was reviewed by the board and it's been updated to...
In case there were any changes, it should have taken place?
The next board that, that comes in in three or four years will know that this board reviewed it and approved it in two thousand sixteen.
Do we provide a drug-free awareness program to our employees?
Do we provide a what?
A drug-free awareness program to our employees?
Drug-free awareness program? You mean like DARE?
I think it's one of the...
Just as they will, so just make sure we do it if we approve it.
I believe it's nine. To answer your question, I believe that, I can't remember, it's seven or nine mandated trainings that all employees should receive on an annualized basis. And at this present time, I cannot certify that all of those trainings are occurring. That's one of the area that Holly and I have talked about, that we need to put that online. And then during a PD day, give teachers a certain amount of time in which they can go through these various trainings. Most of them are pretty straightforward, not complicated. And we also need to get a document from all employees stating that they've gone through those trainings online so that we can prove no, this has been done to all employees. I was hopeful that that would be up and done by the second half of the year, but we still have not done that. But that has to get done. And I would say at this point in time, the answer to your question is, I really don't know, but I suspect we're not training in all nine areas that we should be.
Put it on Google Docs. It'll work real well.
You can do it that way, too. Yep. Might be a good way to go.
Then you could pin it as homework.
I could check.
You know, we'll know whether or not they got through five minutes or the whole hour, huh? We know flooding, whether or not they know about no tobacco in the school.
There you go. All right. So we need to reapprove five of these that aren't changed. And the first is ABD, drug-free workplace, drug-free schools.
That's why I asked, because the very first thing is, is in compliance with statute requirements, the district will. And the second thing is provide a drug-free awareness program. So I don't approve it if we don't do that.
Let's, let's highlight that maybe at the next board meeting, just to, we can bring in the seven, seven or nine, well, the seven or nine mandatory training areas to the board, so at least you're aware of it.
If we don't, we should just delete that bullet and approve it or something. If we do, great. If we should, I don't know. I don't know.
So before we approve anything here, can we, if we don't have to reopen it, can we just make sure that there's nothing in there that's in conflict with those seven or nine? Like...
You can move any one of the, you can defer any one of these.
Yeah, but we don't know, I wouldn't know to be able to approve any of these five without knowing what those nine things that you, they have to take care of.
Yep.
So I think that on those five, I think that we just need to push them to March. And maybe by then, you guys, you know, Holly will have a better under, better plan for us on that.
On all five of them, don't you understand?
Well, I mean, tobacco, you, I mean, unless you want to go through each one of these...
There's no promises in that one. It's just, you can't smoke or chew tobacco on campus.
Just can't smoke.
Let's play football. No, just...
Or is it baseball?
Yes, I don't, that one looks fine. I'd say the other four are probably fine.
Do we want to add, what do they call those things now that people use?
Electronic?
The vaporizer things, you know what I mean?
Electronic cigarettes?
No, not just those. Well, those would be something I'd add, too. But what are the kids doing now?
I think they're called vaporizers. I know, I know what you're... and they did not make mention of that at all in the new, in the update.
It says smokeless cigarettes.
But I think an e-cigarette and a vaporizer are different things, right?
Right, but they're not tobacco.
Vaporizers, yeah, not for tobacco.
Can you add them in that tobacco policy?
I think it'd have to be a different policy, because this just says tobacco product.
I'm making those up.
It says smokeless cigarettes, which I would assume covers e-cigarettes.
How would those make smoke?
Okay, yeah.
Well, they make vapor...
But no, I don't know.
Is vapor smoke?
Those vaporizer things.
Somebody whose battery on his vaporizer exploded in his pocket.
Oh, well.
That just happened, it was on the news, right? Was somebody local, Rochester?
I saw, I just saw the image of it. Not, not pretty.
So do you want to check on that, on this one also?
Uh, yeah, maybe.
I guess what's the, what would be the policy on, if you have a, we have a no smoking policy, such as here, and, and you come across a student who is using one of the e-cigarettes or something like that, are they or are they not in violation of the policy? If you just come across them, you know, at public, at a beach or a sporting event or something like that, that's, you know, would, would a student be in violation of that or not?
It says in and on school facilities and grounds. If you see them at the beach, they're not on school facilities and grounds.
Now, if you walked in, if they were in the bathroom with a vaporizer, I think that would be a tougher question.
Yeah, that's, I think that's where it gets a little...
I'm just wondering if all those fall under smokeless cigarettes?
Yeah. I think so.
I guess I don't know technically if e-cigarettes, it says, and tobacco in any other form. So is e-cigarettes, is that a tobacco material? I have no idea what it is.
Just nicotine.
Just nicotine? Is that right?
Nicotine is the, is the key thing there. And they're dangerous because nobody knows what's in them.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So there are other chemicals in them. So you don't want kids using them around other kids, I would think, because they're secondhand.
Those are good questions for us to review, then.
But I think also the vaporizers also give people nicotine, right? It's just another vehicle for, for nicotine.
Yeah.
So we might want to say tobacco or nicotine products? Maybe that'd cover everything.
What about the patch? What if they're trying to quit smoking, they want a patch?
That's sixteen-year-old trying to...
Yeah, we can find a lot of roles.
Exactly. What if it's prescribed? What if they get a prescription for the patch? Because they're trying to quit smoking.
That would be different.
Should we move on to, move on to the safety program?
I was gonna say, I was gonna say, can you just tell that we are not in the mood of looking to approve any policies today?
Poor Michelle, she's like, this is gonna be easy.
They're your policies. I'm just doing what you told me to do.
Michelle, why don't you move over a little bit?
Her first mistake was to call no brain.
I was gonna say.
Because then we're gonna overthink it.
No, I think these are good, I think those are good questions, by the way, boy. I really appreciate that.
Other, it's the people on staff that know CPR other than nurses. See, that's the next one. So who's the other, just so you know, who, who are the other staff in the schools other than the nurses that know CPR?
You have to have teachers that go on field trips, at least one teacher.
No, no, no. It says, the superintendent shall ensure that at least one person on staff can do it other than a nurse. I'm just asking him who those people are.
Does it say, "I designate?"
You can't move with the prank.
Why don't we just start with designate and just put superintendent, other BA?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna be serious. At the admin team meeting, we had that conversation because we were thinking about doing CPR training at the professional development day. And all the principals are clearly aware, they have to have an additional person beside the nurse who's CPR trained. You have to have a CPR person for field trips, and I believe for athletic teams. So, I mean, we are aware of that. And in a serious way, we do, we do ensure that there are other people trained in every building, and we do their training on an annual or whatever basis as needed.
And the CPR training does also include the AED.
I was gonna say, yeah. The defibrillator is part of that.
We're now gonna have two at each of the three schools.
Do we send an AED when there's sports teams going to play, like baseball?
I think they have to.
I believe that's...
If they have one.
Yep.
I believe the home trainer, like I know our trainer here for outside athletic events will bring the AED. He has his own now.
Oh, good. So they're not bringing the one from the school out?
Like they were. No, they're not. He now has his own.
So comfortable with the safety?
Nicotine lozenges?
Yeah.
We're now, we're now on heart attacks.
I'm researching here.
We move from tobacco to heart attacks.
But Derek, we're on the third one now, safety.
I'm doing the research in the second one.
No, they're black licorice.
So is there a motion to reapprove the safety program?
So many.
Any conversation? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Now let's move on to emergency care and first aid.
I have, I have some issues with that one.
Oh, boy.
Sorry.
That's all right.
Just a couple. Um, I, I just thought this sentence was curious. Under emergencies, second sentence, caution shall be exercised not to minimize or maximize any injury or illness. I don't think it says what it's intended to say. I mean, shouldn't we want to minimize the extent of an injury or illness? Not like emotionally for the child, but don't we, if somebody's bleeding and their arm's hanging off, don't we want to give them...
I think that's what it's trying to say, is don't panic. And don't, and don't be too lax about it. It's just the way it was written. I, I didn't personally write it.
That was our way of a few years ago saying, we want to just take the middle ground.
We don't, we don't want...
We don't want to go a little left or a little right. We're gonna take the middle ground.
We don't commit to helping.
In reasonable judgment.
Yeah. Don't make a commitment on that student over there that, "We need a little help," you know?
I think, I don't even know if you need that section.
I hope paragraph is probably gone.
I think that's...
I'm not sure it says much. I think it's just filler. Make it look a little beefier.
Well, I think mandating that, that everyone, all personnel, I mean, for this, in, in the schools, have to understand the proper steps to be taken in the event. I think that's okay. And, and I think the reasonable judgment says what it needs to say. If you're talking about not minimizing, you're maximizing. Emotional reaction to the, um, but then the other thing is, um...
So are we recommending to strike that sentence, then?
I would strike it, yeah.
I think that if we're saying all personnel shall understand the proper steps to be taken in the event of an injury or emergency, then again, there has to be some PD or a signed sheet or waiver or something that we're ensuring that that is taking place.
Yeah.
So just a quick question on, on this. So if a, students are going out, let's just use a, a field trip for one of our, one of our classes, you know, in the middle school. And they're going out on a field trip. Do, is there an actual book with all this information for the students that actually travels with those buses in case there's a, an event that happens for a student so they can make these contacts?
I think there is, yeah.
I believe the answer is yes, but I will check.
All right.
They should have, I think they have to have all of the signed, um, slips with them and it's in and for themselves and happens.
I know I fill them out, I just don't know.
The release form, so that if something did happen. I believe that's absolutely what has to happen.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So the other, another thing, um, to third paragraph down under emergencies, it talks about options to, um, offer CPR, et cetera. But then, there's, there's one about oxygen. This authorization extends to administering oxygen without prior notification to parents and guardians. Please note that oxygen is not available in the medical offices of the school buildings and the list. Why are we saying that we'll administer it and then saying, oh, but we won't? I would get rid of that whole thing. This authorization extends to administering oxygen. If we don't administer it, if we don't have it to administer, then we shouldn't be giving it and taking it away in the same, I just think it's silly.
That's not allowed, actually.
I don't know whether we have...
You don't have oxygen.
Right. So I think, I would strike that.
I, I don't know whether we have any students who have to take oxygen with them, and whether that pertains to a student who has to self-transport oxygen. I don't know that. I, let me go back and ask the nurses what the intent was here, because it doesn't make sense on the face.
Actually, but it references an RSA, so we normally don't overrule the state legislator, legislation.
But is that saying, too, that they can administer oxygen if it's available?
Yeah. If the student is on oxygen, and, and for whatever reason that oxygen's come off that, whatever the student was doing, then only the nurse should be the one that is putting it on that student.
And the RSA addresses, it's specific to the school nurse administration of oxygen.
So I, you know...
Two hundred dash forty A. A school nurse shall be permitted to administer oxygen to a pupil in a medical emergency without parental permission or physician's order.
All right. That would sound better. Um, I had a question about Narcan. Um, it's not listed in here. We have, the nurses able to give, to administer, oh, I just lost it, epinephrine. But what about Narcan? I don't know if we even have any in the school, but in the event of an overdose of heroin, not that, hopefully that would never, ever happen to anybody in the school. But, um, do we want to include that in there as a possibility? I mean, in case somebody...
I think we should. A lot of the districts around us have incorporated that recently in their policies.
They have.
And I think we should.
They, I don't, um, I think they had a, um, public hearing before they modified that ruling, when Nash would did. So you may want to check on that before we just do that, whether or not we need to... I mean, we could change the policy, but whether or not we want to have a public hearing to the community to have an opportunity to come in and voice whatever their voices may be on that. But I, you know, personally, I agree with Gina. I hope it never is necessary. And we probably need to figure out what is, if we're gonna allow that in here, we'll need to figure out what the costs and, and stuff for having that and disposing of that, all that processes like that occur.
The other thing is, too, is it's not just students, but we have, you know, people coming to the building for other events and stuff, and in case somebody crashes, um, and it would be nice to, well, to have it.
It's like having a fire extinguisher. You never want to use it.
Yeah.
You want it, something on hand in emergencies.
Well, I'm wondering if that comes under emergency care or prevention of the use of drugs and alcohol.
I would tell you this one.
I don't know. Well, it would be certainly an emergency care situation.
Because under, under the prevention of, of the use of alcohol, they have the breathalyzer as well.
Yeah, but that's, that's...
But this is more, this is a rescue thing, so I mean, this is...
That's my only question, is, or do we put it under both?
I would, well, I would say...
At least under emergency care.
I don't think, this one, this is emergency. We're not trying to determine whether or not...
They're high.
They're high.
Right. We're not testing.
All it does is rescue somebody so that, you know, an ambulance can come and get
All it does is rescue somebody so that, you know, an ambulance can come and get them, so they don't just die.
Nashville has approved it genuinely.
Yeah, they did.
Can we, um, check legal on this as well as nursing, and come back to you folks with a recommendation, both regarding the, the policy and the.
Maybe I'll just call, contact Nashville and see what their, their thoughts are on, on that whole process.
Yep.
I read about it in the paper.
Oh, there's something else too, I caught, um, under, I'm not seeing it in this, but I thought I saw it in, um. Under EBBC, JLCER, let's see, yeah, that's the emergency care first aid, I don't know why I'm not seeing the language that I got an issue with here, um, I'll come back to it though, if you guys wanna move on, if I find it, if we can come back maybe, just one other thing that needs to be.
Well, that's the one that's under the amended title.
Okay. Maybe there was an amendment.
That'll bring us to EBBD.
Okay, just a, real quick, there is a prob, there is an issue here, um, under illness, it says here, the nurses required to ensure that someone is available to receive the student or take the student home prior to his or her release from school, oh, never mind, I thought that was us taking the student home, and that would be in conflict with the way you talked about earlier, so.
Unless you have a bus license, and a little bus.
A little bus.
Alright, that'll bring us to EBBD, indoor air quality.
And I had a question about this one too, because, so it's done, um, once a year, and I wondered if once a year is enough for air quality issues, um, and the reason why I thought of that is because of Griffin Memorial School, and I know there was a mold problem several years ago, so there was an air quality issue there, um, and I had a neighbor years and years ago, this kid's all grown up now, but I, I remember him being bothered by the air quality in the school when he was in it, um, and I'm just wondering if, you know, all you need is a really bad flood, rainstorm, something like that to start mold growing somewhere.
Yeah, there's a couple of issues, I mean, equality of air testing, you can get a very simple air test, and, and some of them, it goes to full range, gamut, too, very elaborate, um, there are guidelines from the Department of Education as to, and the air quality specialists will recommend a, a once a year, unless there's some conditional environmental conditions that would warrant a test more often, for instance, GMS.
And I'm certain that there was a concern that there, you could always retest if needed.
Sure, and that's what, that's what they would suggest, that you do it by preventive maintenance on an annualized basis, and report those results out to the Department of Education, but again, if the circumstances warrant it, and I know the district has responded to those, ever changing, especially at GMS, cause that's, seems to be one of our focal points.
Do we do one of these every summer, or every year? In all the schools, yeah?
It says they have to keep a record of five years.
Let me make a motion to approve EBBD.
I'll second it.
Further discussion?
Do you have more stuff?
Um, not for this one.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain. Now these'll bring us to the amended ones.
Boy. Same.
The last ones were the easy ones.
Proceeds.
Make a motion to approve ACE.
Which one?
ACE.
ACE.
Non-discrimination.
Um, when you're talking about disability, are we talking physical disability, are we talking mental or emotional disability?
I think it would be any, all of the above. Will you strike those?
Where I struck out, yeah, that was the change that was, um, that was the change that was recommended by the NA, the New Hampshire School Boards Association, and, um, actually, legal, there were legal counsel people that were noted on that, that had, I guess they didn't like, they had a big problem with the handicapped disabled student.
Yeah.
Label, and decided that a student with a disability was a little more preferable to describe any dis, any disability.
Should it be changed in the first paragraph then as well? Yep, on the basis of handicap.
Thank you, I missed that.
Just disable.
Second paragraph two, or, sorry, third, last sentence. So making a motion to approve with those changes.
Second.
Further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained. Now brings us to EBBC, JLCER, emergency care first aid procedures.
Emergency care.
So that, um, the italicized language, that's the new?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I have one question, I'm gonna jump around on this, but what is the difference between asphyxiation and choking and foreign body and throat, which seems like it has pretty much the same language in it?
Yeah, it was, that was the way the, the whole procedure was written, we take these sam, sam, we took samples, um, in the past from the NHSBA, from their policy manual, so everything was listed separately, and there are some duplications, but they have different terms for them, I think it's redundant, but it's up to you if you wanna strike them, or you wanna keep them in there.
I've got an issue with what's, what the instructions are though, now I am by no means a medical person, but, um, I thought slapping a person on the back was not the thing to do if somebody's got something lodged in their throat, cause I thought you could actually lodge something even more firmly.
Yeah.
Um, and it also says immediately call a physician, I would, nine one one, I would think, if somebody's choking, um. After calling a physician, making an attempt to remove the foreign body.
Well, I also have the nurses looking at this as well.
Good, cause I don't, I don't.
I forgot to mention that.
Take one of those, take one of those seniors.
I mean, it doesn't say anything about the heimlich, but slapping somebody on the back or even picking up a kid, like, hanging him upside down, I'm not sure that that's like the best method of dislodging something in their throat, I don't know.
I just like this, the intro.
Why don't we send this one, foreign bodies? Send this one to the nurses, maybe they'll have a better idea.
I did, I'm just waiting.
Oh, okay.
I'm just waiting for their response.
Well, after they.
They're still laughing.
They're still laughing.
Like I said, I didn't write this, I just took this from the thing.
I would think it happens more frequently than you would think though, I mean, I'm just saying, after spending some time in the cafeteria, lunch duty.
Well, I would say in, in the, this is, that is probably very concerning in the elementary school, more so than the other two schools, I would hope.
So the, under emergency care for sickness and accidents, the second paragraph, second sentence, in the event of a severe injury, school nurse, nurse or person in charge of local parentis shall, the term is in local parentis, so get rid of charge of, it's a, it's a legal term of arbitrage, in the place of apparent.
Where are you?
What page?
It's the first page, under emergency care for sickness and accidents, second paragraph, second sentence.
May I, Mr. J, just put a quick B.A. spin on this, it's just my, I, this is the first time I've looked at it, and to me, this is more clinical, that you're in a board policy establishing how a school nurse is going to.
Dislodge.
Yeah, and if that nurse were not to follow the board policy, could in itself create a liability for the district, I mean, this is almost like clinical, how that nurse is going to address these things, and I don't believe that, that a board policy should put clinical instructions to a school nurse on how to, how to administer first aid to a student, that's why we have a nurse, they're licensed, and they're the ones that are supposed to do it.
So do we not, as a district, need a policy?
We're almost like dictating to them, procedure that may or may not be appropriate, and if they don't follow it, I as a school nurse would have a, and I as a B.A. am gonna express a little concern over this.
Send it to the insurance company.
Well, I mean, I've said for years, you should never be too specific in a policy.
I know, I.
It's a headache.
Rest for sure.
And if, if it's up to the board, if you just wanna rescind this portion, you can.
I, look, I think you, I think you send it to the insurance company, you send it to get the nurses' feedback and, and, and just let the, let the people smarter than me give us sort of their opinion on it.
Head lice. I agree with that. Anxious has gotten trouble for changing the head lice policy.
I think there should be no instructions in there that should be followed, cause they stay wrong. Well, yeah, the nurses are following, if something happens. Right.
What's up, an R.N.?
That's why they're licensed as an R.N. to do, they're trained clinically to handle.
These instructions right now are in the policy though, right there, in approved policy already.
Well, they're procedures, and under the administrative rules, procedures don't even have to be approved by the board, we can change them, or, you know, the district, the superintendent can change them or rescind them at any time, but this is, you know, this is really, this is old.
Inevitably, this is probably something more so for the person who's not the nurse, trying to figure out.
Well, hopefully whoever's there doesn't need to bust out this manual to implement some of these.
Always have a clicker, they, they get click, everything stops.
Pause for a minute.
Pull out the policy, go, okay, you're doing, oh, two seconds, oh, clear your parents.
It's frankly, just about all of these should just be called, call nine one one, call nine one one. The first aid rolodex.
Getting beyond the witching hour. Yes, the problem with calling is nine one one, no, then the person's sitting there dying.
I mean, it should probably just say, you know, refer to the nurse, and then the neck, the chain of command, and call nine one one, and that's it.
I agree, that's true, that's why I think these.
Yeah, but then in the meantime, the person's choking, so if you didn't slap them in the back, he chokes to death, then what happens?
But I should be, like, call nine one one should be, if there's, if we're talking about somebody who's not a nurse trying to deal with it.
Alright, so we'll find some clarification there, we'll go to data and record retention, we just did this one not that long ago.
This is one where we, where we have to keep everything for twelve years.
Yeah, pretty straightforward, does the RSA for it too?
Well, actually, all the retention files are.
All the retention files are listed, they've been, some have been changed, um, and I went to both state and federal to get the changes.
This one looks easy.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve, EHB.
All those in favor? Aye, opposed, abstained.
Oh, boy, technology acceptable use, we're in trouble.
That was just one on the list, yeah.
I think we just did this one.
Yeah, we did, it took a long time, I thought.
We're already making changes to it.
I know, pagers are the devices, do we have to add smartwatches?
Can I make one comment on this, Mr. J?
Yes.
I, I think as we migrate to, um, a more assertive communication pattern with our community using technology, we may have to revisit this acceptable use policy, because, um, current thinking in a number of districts is that we should empower teachers to use, uh, current technology to communicate with the district as much as possible, and, um, I think that's a great idea, because you'll get all kinds of information going out to our community, to our residents about what's going on with their kids, but in doing that, there will be policies that will be brought to the board, and just as a little bit of a, um, a trial balloon, I'm looking at, um, implementing in September, a much more, um, let's say, aggressive communication policy with the community using technology, and I've had meetings, um, already with, um, some experts, and I've had a small committee, and I'll be bringing more information to the board as we get into the April, May timeframe, so I would just say, whatever you approve now, you may be reviewing over the July, August timeframe for implementation in September.
Is that a wait then?
So, your choice, and Michelle didn't really know that, and so I'm kinda springing this on her.
That's okay.
But, uh, I'm sitting here thinking this might wanna wait until the summer to really review.
This can probably be simplified too, like, there's an acceptable uses list, that's like fifteen things long, you could just say, don't do illegal things.
Left up to interpretation of.
I, I looked at this and I gave my computer back.
Hey, you know, you know, you know, if you get a Chromebook, it's only half as long.
Did I get the small?
Got two pages on it.
Alright, now bring us to GCO, supervision and evaluation of instructional staff.
Oh, boy, are we, is this just, is this being redone soon, or?
What group is this, Michelle?
This is personnel.
GCO.
No, no, which group was this, is this the one you want, is this just?
Amend, yeah, but it, I only put it under amend because it's not a huge change, it was just some new lang, um, some new introductory language, which I'm not even sure is.
Well, the new RSA mandates that you have, the board approve a teacher evaluation and performance system, and clearly, what we're, um, I think towards the tail end of getting accomplished, and certainly will be reported out to you, uh, some of the initial work done with the rubrics and the SLOs, and then the, uh, larger group, which will be completing the growth and evaluation document, uh, that team will be meeting, I'm hopeful, in probably about two or three weeks, four weeks, and we were bringing to you the entire document, uh, prior to, uh, July, we're, we're looking at July, beginning of July, to bring that to you, so it'll be fully implemented, so you are doing this, this is being accomplished, uh, that doc, that is being accomplished right now in the district, and ultimately, you will have to approve that.
This is just saying that we're gonna do that.
Right.
Make a motion to approve, GCO.
Further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained. Now these next ones are.
These next ones are, one is new, two are new, well, two are, uh, the availability and distribution of healthy foods is brand new and is required under the law, um, background and investigation, investigation and criminal check you had started as a board, year or so ago.
Yeah.
So we're finishing it, trying to, and this is the, the other one is the student activity fund management policy that, um, Frank revised.
Well, let's start with EFA, availability and distribution of healthy foods.
So should not, um, I understand that superintendent's, uh, ultimately is in charge of everything, but shouldn't this be the, um, director of food services ultimately be the?
That'd be his designate, we can't hold her accountable though, we can only hold him accountable.
Yeah, but these are not, um, these are district policies, these aren't school board policies, these aren't policies that, that govern us, these are policies that govern the district.
Which the superintendent is responsible for. All it's saying is that he's gonna be overseeing this.
And, and as much as, as I, I, I agree both sides, ultimately, most of these things come down to superintendent signs that the superintendent's held responsible for, you know, it comes down with, you know, Frank does all the work in the business office, he does all the financials, I wanna make sure it's on record. And I, I sign off all of the stuff that says, um, under, under the penalty of blah, 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 but, you know.
And we just give the superintendent the signature page.
That's why they always get rid of the coaches.
Do you need this for a first reading?
You, you do not have to move it.
Alright.
As a first reading, no, you don't, but you could say, we can bring it to a first reading.
Are we, do we do any of this stuff, do we actually look at like, research-based inspection standards?
Yeah, the food service.
Your director of food service does, um, all of this under the.
I mean, the food service.
This is right out of the news.
And we're still serving those French toast sticks?
They're doing for lunch.
No, I'm getting a thumbs down.
Yeah, yeah, didn't you know, one of those things, it said, charge ten cents for every ketchup packet.
Make a motion to approve.
I even filled the ketchup bin one day.
EFA.
For, you wanna.
First reading.
First reading.
Second, further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained.
Takes three meetings to get a report.
GBCD.
We'll change in the next meeting till I go back to first reading.
Background, background investigation and criminal records.
It's so true. Out of the shallen or something.
This one should be pretty straightforward too.
This one had, um, when, the last time the board had had this, you were asking about, um, I'm sorry, you were asking about, uh, conditional offer of employment, and, uh, final offer of employment, and I did meet with Holly, and basically, she said the conditional offer of employment is not a letter we give them, um, it is the, they're, but they are told in their, um, in their, um, orientation, uh, if you will, um, that the, their job, you know, their, their employment is subject to a successful background check, so even if we hire them, and they're working, and the background check comes back bad, they're told, they'll have to be called in and told that.
Somebody be working in the school before the background check is completed?
It takes a week, two weeks, normally that doesn't happen, but the law says that they can do that.
What happens is that when you hire somebody, you submit for the criminal background check, once you've submitted for the criminal background check, you may employ the person to work for you, and then, um, if you get a criminal background check that comes back, that turns up something, then you bring the employee in, and you dismiss them, but technically, um, you don't have to have the criminal background check in your hands for the person to work for you, most often that occurs if you're hiring somebody in late summer, or if you've gotta fill in in the middle of the year, and you're looking to bring somebody in, and you hire them, subject to the criminal background check being okay.
They don't have to pay for their own background check, do they?
Yes, they don't.
They do?
We pay for volunteers.
So we're hiring a new employee, they pay for their own background check?
They don't have to pay for their own background check, do they?
Yes, they don't.
They do?
We pay for volunteers.
So we're hiring a new employee, they pay for their own background check?
Yeah.
You, wow.
Don't get away with that in the public, in the private sector.
I had to pay for mine, I've been here twelve years.
But, this is public.
We, we hear about it quite often.
We do it in installment payments.
Something we can learn, you know?
Installment payments.
Comes out of your first paycheck.
Is there a motion for GBCD?
Make a motion for first reading.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained.
Here we go, Student Activity Funds.
Student Activity Fund.
This one I can happily say I don't have to explain.
Yeah.
Turn that over to Frank, aren't you?
That's right.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just a couple of highlights for this, this is a, uh, this is a draft working, working process, uh, to address some of the concerns, both of the financial audit. Um, as well as, uh, the concerns that are expressed over the past three years that I've heard from the school board. Uh, more specifically, uh, under Page One Authority, um, this policy will require, uh, upfront and annual authorization of the school board. Authorizing the specific accounts that are classified as Student Activity Funds, I think that is a, uh, healthy process for the board to, uh. Recognize and actually approve those accounts that will be under the, uh, authority, uh, of the district as Student Activity Funds. And it also requires, uh, periodic reporting of those Student Activity Funds to the school board, not just to the BA, but to the school board. And that will be done, um, on a quarterly basis as well. So the policy does address some of the safeguards, some of the authorities, uh, and on the last page specifically to the disposition of inactive accounts, we, we have a fair number. Again, more so at the high school, uh, that accounts that, um, the current policy allows us to carry inactive accounts, I believe. For a period, um, multiple years after, and technically, uh, those accounts, once, for instance, to give you an example, the class of 2016. Once they graduate, the day after they graduate, we have no longer, and, and do no longer have a fiduciary responsibility for those funds. So they either are gifted back to the school district by that class, or we will physically cut a check with the balance of that account and say, here you go, it's now your responsibility.
I remember the last time we looked at these accounts though, there were some classes that were like five, six, seven years old that still had.
By board, current board policy, they can have those. But that's a very dangerous, uh, for us to, uh, we no longer have that fiduciary responsibility as it states in the proposed policy. The, the, the real life is those students are no longer, uh, involved with the district, they no longer, uh, can have accounts, quite honestly, with the district. Consequently, we need to, in that relationship as a student activity fund.
So at the end of the school year, that those funds would be transferred into whatever type of account that.
Typically, you go to the, the class president and say, what would you like to do with those funds?
I, um, way back when, when I walked up the hill to school both ways in the snow, um, we, uh, uh, when our senior class graduated, there was. A substantial amount of money there, five or ten thousand dollars, and, um, uh, it was, um. Saved by the high school for the first reunion, the fifth year reunion. And, and whatever wasn't done with it at that point in time, it had to be then dispersed in whatever process had been put, but it was. Uh, because, you know, as they're raising these funds, um, normally, they stop raising funds after juniors because they put on the, whatever the junior, senior, um. Prom, or whatever at least was where I went to school, and, and, you know, they tried to use up a lot of the funds there, but if they'd been successful, they could use it as, at. You know, their first, their first reunion, and I, I would imagine that that's probably how this was set up, that's why we would have. Accounts that are five, six, seven, eight, or nine years old, but they may never have had an event, a reunion or anything of sorts, so.
But, but I think when they graduate, let the, whoever the financial officers of the class take care of the monies and get away from school.
Yeah, but, so.
That's the way it is.
So on graduation plus one day, you turn over a check for however much money to five students. And say, now you figure out how to get it back to a hundred and twenty students, or a hundred students, or a hundred and ten students, is that really being responsible?
Well, how's it, how's it, right now, five years later, then you said to one student maybe?
Normally, normally they come back and say, we're holding a reunion, and they begin the process of accessing those funds.
Frank's saying they don't.
And no plates, no plates put on by the, by the students, put, put on the reunion, school doesn't put on the reunion, but that, the class. Whoever made up the class president, vice president, secretary, and treasurer are normally the ones that start the process of putting together that reunion. I mean, is that, is it different today?
I can, I went through the process, I can speak.
Sure, sure.
So when we did. Nate Cooper, just, um, when we did our reunion, so what happened was literally, it wasn't right away, but. Believe in the fall of the next year, the main office cut us, uh, cut me a check for the remaining balance of that fund, and then we just went and. Opened up and I, we put the money, just basically invested it in a CD for a couple of years, just to gain some interest on it so that we could, um, hold a reunion, but they cut. I don't know if that is, but, you know, how often that has happened here, but I know when we did it, they just said, here you go, and then we were.
I think the president, co-president would wanna make money on the money.
We, again, I'll be very clear, this is about risk, uh, of funds, fiduciary responsibility, these are not the funds of the district. We are fiduciary responsible while those students are members of the school district. Once that group is no longer responsible for the school district or a membership of our school district, we no longer have a fiduciary responsibility, in fact. There's more risk associated with after the fact if you keep those monies there, not only from having, if you have a substantial amount of money here, it's our responsibility to make sure that. Then who do we turn it over to versus whoever we know to be the class president on the day of graduation, it's their responsibility. Then, they become, if you will, the care, the care, keep, the keeper of those funds, they now have the fiduciary responsibility as the, as. And we, we're handing the money over to the last known president of that class of 2016, it is now their responsibility.
And I'm certain we have those conversations with them a few months prior to graduation.
And they do, the advisor should, you know, and the advisor, I know, the senior advisors, uh, I've, I've heard just from chatting with some of the folks here at the high school, that. Senior advisor, you know, that's where they come up with the ideas to gift, make certain gifts back to the, uh, whether it be a monetary gift or, or, or a gift such as a bench, as we see outside and some of the other things, the sign. Um, that's the advisor that works with that senior class, which would be kinda grooming them towards that decision, but if there's no decision, then at, again, at that last, it doesn't, it's not. Literally the last day of school, but those funds will be given to the class president, it's their responsibility, and it's their fiduciary responsibility as the class president leaving the district.
Is there a motion for JJF?
I think, do you want some approval now, or is this just kind of a first reading?
No, I just first reading, I, I need to clean up a few things in it as well.
So we have EEAG?
That's just the change you made today.
Yeah.
That's the one the superintendent was talking to you about?
Right.
Um, we need, uh, for the board to, you know, look that over and make sure that they're okay with changes, and. We'd like to come back, we would think at the next meeting, right?
Yep.
Um, because according to the law, or according to the interpretation of the, of that, uh, of that RSA, um. We may have to rescind one of the waiver.
Whose interpretation was that again?
I'm sorry?
Whose interpretation was it?
The, um, it was the state police.
It's a state police, I believe, officer sergeant who was in charge of this particular group of RSAs as they apply to transportation, and he has, um. Changed the viewpoint, um, in terms of that particular law, I've got council's letter, I'll forward that to you when you could take a look at that.
Actually, they should, it should be attached to last week's, well, it might even be attached to this one.
I can certainly, I have it somewhere in this.
His name is Trooper Kelby. And he's, uh, indicated that the school bus driver certification requirements pertain to school buses, but not mixed school buses.
I, I will tell you, you've gotta read it and study it a bit, it's confusing, we just read it out loud, it's gonna be, huh? But you really, if, if you wanna look at that, um, if you don't have that, let us know, we'll get that out to you, but you really do have to read it, not, not to be. It's just not straightforward, in my mind, you agree with that?
Oh, absolutely.
That's the last of those, right?
I believe that was the last one, Mr. Chair.
Excellent.
What's that?
I said to John, that wasn't so bad.
No.
Not as bad as it was six years ago.
Well, I will thank Michelle for doing, you know, hard work, I know she just put her nose to the grindstone and just kept at this amongst her other tasks, I appreciate it.
I'm still building.
Well, I came in, I came in on the tail end of two thousand and ten when we were just wrapping this up.
Yeah.
And they had spent, uh. Four years of Dr. Color's. Positions that going over every one of the policies, and.
Excellent.
Some of them were long.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, forever.
Do we have any questions on the manifest? With that, public input? All right, no public input, it'll bring us to non-public.
Please tell one more thing, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, cool.
Board member York had asked about the Adobe, um, program and what level of, of funding we had for that, and I asked for clarification from, uh, Jason Pelletier. He sent me this letter, I just wanna read it for the record, cuz you asked for the record. Uh, when Jason came aboard, we had two licensing for two computer labs, the Engineering Design Lab and Programming Web, which is about fifty-five computers. In our budget at that time, we had four thousand eight hundred dollars, but their pricing changed to just shy of nine thousand dollars. Adobe Creative Cloud, currently FY but year budget, two computer labs, four thousand eight hundred dollars. Adobe changed licensing and the price went up just shy of nine thousand dollars. We didn't have the money to be able to make that happen, but worked out a deal for this year only for six thousand six hundred dollars for those labs. We were quoted via the phone about twenty thousand for a site license, only the high school, each other school would be roughly about the same price. We put in next year's budget, nine thousand to license those labs, barring any change to Adobe licensing. As far as I know, only those two labs teach curriculum in which they need this software. You asked for the, the level of, uh, Adobe that we had, and it's not as clear here, so I still have a little bit more clarification, but I didn't want you to think that I didn't hear what your question was.
But even so, it would only be good on those two labs, thirty-five computers.
And I think I showed you what they had the last time.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I will, your, your question was to the, the, the depth of, of the, the actual level of Adobe that we have.
Well, it should be a creative cloud, so, I mean, it would be, it's part of design.
Does that kinda answer your question?
It's learning your software.
Okay, thank you. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Now bring us non-public. Non-public session, RSA ninety-one dash A colon three one one AC. Dismissal, promotion, or compensation of any public employee, or the disciplining of such employee, or the investigation of any charges against him unless the employee affected, one, has the right to a meeting, and two. Requested the meeting be open, in which case, the request shall be granted.